Good evening and welcome to this Pasco City Council Workshop Meeting of Monday, April 28th, 2025. The City Council thanks you for being a part of your city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda for those who are present in the audience in the back table to the right under that little sign that's got a blue arrow that says Agenda on it. This meeting is being televised live on PSC Channel, on PSC TV, Channel 191, in Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland. It's streamed on the city's Facebook page, its website, its YouTube channel, its Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meetings video is available on the city's website as well. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, the city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk?
Councilmember Brahas?
Present.
Blaisdell?
Here.
Grim?
Here.
Harpster?
Present.
Peralis?
Here.
Serrano?
I am present.
And Milnee is excused. Six council members present, Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you. If you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, do we have any verbal reports from council members? Mr. Peralis?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the ribbon cutting for Bulldog Bistro, Tri-City's Afghan Food, and also utilized the new parklet down there at Pasco Specialty Kitchen. It was very, very well attended. It was really, really cool to kind of see the progress, kind of come full circle for that area. And then I'd just been taco crawling for like the last week and it's been pretty fun. And I encourage all the other council members, everyone out there to, you know, taco crawl and go visit some, some good eateries.
Thank you. Appreciate your attendance. Mr. Harpster?
Attended TRIDAC board meeting last Thursday and then a follow-up meeting with some of the folks from TRIDAC this morning. Conversation mainly focused on mitigation for both residential and commercial development projects throughout the state coming from Fish and Wildlife. It used to be reasonable mitigation. It's become quite unreasonable lately. TRIDAC is meeting with Governor Ferguson here in a few weeks and that's going to be one of the items of discussion that we want to talk with him about because the governor appoints the head of Fish and Wildlife. And in 2021, at the height of COVID, they, they've been Fish and Wildlife proposed several changes to mitigation measures. There was opportunities for public comment, but it seems that looking back, it was very minimal. Again, it was at the height of COVID and those went into effect beginning of next year. That's causing a lot of significant delays to projects throughout the area, including here in the City of Pasco for both private projects and city-led projects. And so I think it'll be a long process, but next steps is we'll engage with Governor Ferguson, Rep. Connors, and then probably Gordon Toves Honeywell at some point. So more to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Out in District Two last week, of course, I was joined by you and the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilwoman Blaisdell for the A Street Sporting Complex. And Mr. Rice and his team put on a fantastic grand opening ceremony. It was great to have part of the Pasco High School Soccer Team there. And it was great to see how much that facility was appreciated in that side of town with so much emphasis often on the west side of the town and growth. It was good to show the east side that we have not forgotten about them and love them just as much. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Yeah, that was a great event. And as I told those young ladies, you know, we are very supportive of our youth. You know, if we have youth to highlight, please let us know. I told them they go win a state championship or at least qualify and they want to be recognized, have their coach reach out. So that's a bit of a challenge that we offered them and hopefully we'll see the, the Purple Pasco Bulldog young ladies up here from the soccer team, you know, at the end of the season. In addition to that event, I also attended the Arbor Day Celebration with the Tree Walk Grand Opening for anyone that didn't catch that down here at Pioneer Park, right here across the street. We now have, I believe it's 51 trees or is that, Mr. Rice, 51 trees and species and that?
Yeah, that's a close approximation, yeah.
Yeah. And, and it's pretty cool because there are these little like four-by-fours with a QR code. It talks about the tree and they're actually narrated by our local high school students. So again, this is one of those things where we get to showcase our local kids. It's already, obviously already been recorded, but it's, it's pretty awesome to see that type of engagement with our youth and our community. And that's one of those things I always look forward to seeing. Certainly a wonderful time and I appreciate Parks and Rec's efforts there and the time that you all put into that. Seeing no further lights, we're going to move on to item number five. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Zabel.
If I could, just since we're early in the meeting, bring up an issue?
Yeah.
So we do have a new person at our...
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't sure where we, when we were going to get to that.
Yeah, I should, I meant to talk to you about before the meeting, but thank you for your indulgence. So a pleasure to introduce Haley Miller, our new Community and Economic Development Director. And we're really excited to have her. This is her first day on the job and she's at a council meeting. So a long day for her. Fifteen years in local government with about six of those at the director level, a little more than six, and four of them as the director level at Marysville. So a lot of good things come out of Marysville. So I'm particularly excited to have her here. And she, but she does bring a, a ton of experience in areas where we are working and we are growing in right now. And so to have someone in that can walk in and, and pick up those things, right down to our software, our track-it software, and very similar experience she went through in, in Marysville. She's going to be going through here, I think, with staff. So just wanted to introduce her and, and guys get to know her and, and we're excited to have her on board. Did you want to say a couple things?
Sure. I forgot where the button is. First task. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I am very excited to be here. I've had a great first day and it already feels like home. I have roots in this area. My parents met in Prosser and grew up there and they now live in Pasco. And I have family in the area. So it's nice to come here and stay here and not drive back to the other side. So that's been really nice. And I've had a chance to meet a lot of the staff already down in CED. And of course, the other director team, haven't met everyone yet, but it's been a really good environment and really excited to hit the ground running and, and, and work here. So appreciate the warm welcome. Thank you.
Well, thank you and thank you for joining our team. We greatly appreciate it. I apologize if I unintentionally skipped over you. Like I said, I just wasn't sure where we were going to highlight you, but thank you for bringing that trudge of excitement through. So we appreciate that. Anything else, Mr. Zabel?
That's it, Mayor. Sorry.
Okay. So with that, item number five is our items for discussion with opportunity for public comment. And if anyone remembers how we do the public comment in this meeting, we have an aggregate of eight minutes. We have two two-minute comments designated for pro and two two-minute comments for con. And obviously, if someone has somewhere in the middle, we'll figure out how to separate that time. So it's an aggregate of eight total minutes. Each individual comment limited to two minutes. That's why we got the two-minute clock there. And with that, we have several items. The first is item A, which is our city manager recruitment update. And Ms. Matson, looks like you're kicking us off.
Is this on? Okay. Always have to test it. So good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Greg Prothman from GMP Consultants. If you can recall, back in March 17th, the council selected GMP to recruit for the city manager position. Greg brings extensive experience in executive recruitment for public sector leadership roles and has been engaged to assist us with our city manager search. Tonight, he will be reviewing the draft position profile with you and gathering your feedback to finalize it. I'm going to hand it over to Greg. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members. Glad to be here in person, finally. I apologized before. I had the pleasure of meeting all of you, at least online here recently. So thank you so much for your time. That was very helpful for us. Both Dave and I have been conducting interviews, both at the staff level and the council level, gathering your feedback. And what you have before you tonight is a summary of those efforts and in what we would call your draft position profile. With your permission, I'd like to go through this sort of page by page, section by section, to make sure that you're all comfortable with what we've represented here. It's an opportunity to make any mid-course corrections, update things. Once we're done with this exercise, I'll make all of these needed updates. And we'll go to final document tomorrow and we'll start the recruitment process and get out on, get our ads going later this week. So does that sound like a reasonable process, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, certainly I don't think we need to go line by line, section by section.
No, just the first one is why apply. We put a lot of time and effort into thinking about that. If that looks, if you've had a chance to look at it, any comments on that?
None here. And I think it incorporates, you know, Mr. Harpster.
I did have one on there. The, sorry, I was thinking I was going to have my comments at the end, but I like this page by page. In the why apply section, or it could be in the bullet points on page four, I thought having something there about being action-oriented would be helpful. This covers pretty much everything you and I discussed, except for that one part that I think was really important. And I think there was a majority council that really wanted to hone in on that, at least those two words, action-oriented.
I'll make sure that gets incorporated on page four.
Okay.
That was it for that page. Thanks. Okay, thank you. Okay, no further comments on the front page. Moving to second page, which is welcome to Pasco. This is really a summary of the organization or of the, the community, you know, why, we try to capture, why do you choose to live and work here? And that moves over onto the City of Pasco, where it describes the municipal corporation, the city itself. So it gives the potential candidate a overview of, you know, what Pasco is, what kind of services it provides. Okay, here are no comments. We'll move then to item four. And this is really where your work product shines from your comments to me and that comments of the staff also, by the way. And I appreciate Councilmember Harpster's comments about action-oriented because indeed you did say that and I'll make sure that gets incorporated.
Do we have any comments on this section?
Okay. And then finally to the back page, well, second to the back page, challenges and opportunities. And I have to thank your incoming city manager for these. He was very helpful in pulling those together. So if you don't like them, it's his fault. If they're, if they're outstanding, I'll take full credit.
Mr. Harpster?
Yeah, on this one, it was under financial sustainability. Let's see, the city has imitated a multi-pronged strategic process. I think that was supposed to be initiated.
I believe you're correct. Circled it.
I looked up imitated in dictionary.com and make thinking I didn't know.
Yeah, that's not quite what we had in mind, but thank you for catching that.
And then I liked all these paragraphs. I think it's exactly what we're looking for. In financial sustainability, one thing that I think is missing is, you know, it says taking positive policy, sorry, multi-pronged strategic process of evaluating revenue enhancements, efficiencies, cost shifting. One thing I'd like to include on there, and curious what the rest of the council thinks, is writing this in a nice way, you know, cutting services. That's pretty strong to say those two words, but that is part of the conversation as we look to achieve better financial sustainability. And so a city manager who's willing to have a conversation like that is helpful, along with increasing revenue and other efficiencies and whatnot. And then this was sort of a dumb one, but I thought I'd mention it anyways. The cable bridge picture was a little repetitive because we had it on the very first page, which looked really good. It's maybe something that would tie into economic development. A picture of Broadmoor seemed boring because it's just weeds right now, but I don't know, something. And again, that's just a, a little comment.
I'll work with staff and see if they have other pictures that maybe we can substitute here. I don't disagree. I would go back to, back to the service reduction question and see if there's consensus on that, on that point.
Go ahead, Mr. Peralis. You said yes?
Yeah, I said yes.
From my perspective, I don't know that this is something that necessarily needs to be addressed at this level. I think it's something we want to hone in on as we interview individuals or maybe trigger or mark for you as you're kind of reviewing, you know, to the extent that you touch base with all the applicants and then maybe that's a first threshold question for me. Again, I don't think it's necessarily something we have to put out there right now. Anyone have any other? Mr. Peralis, your lights on?
Yeah, no, I, I maybe for the picture, maybe we have a brand-new reservoir on the west side of town. You know, that has a good picture of the city, the city logo.
We can set up a new one. Absolutely.
And then under economic development, I think we, we have a strong desire to create an economic development strategic plan, supply perhaps in there if the council, you know, just so that the applicant understands that, based on some of the things that we've already talked about, that's something we want to see going forward.
Happy to add that. That's a great comment. Thank you.
Mr. Grim?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say I concur with you. I don't think it's necessary at this point of the process.
Okay. Do we have any other strong opinions on the financial sustainability about costs heading in a more delineated fashion?
I appreciate the point and I like your suggestion of including that in our assessment of the candidates to see if they're even open to the conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you too amenable, Peralis and Harpster?
Oh, yeah.
All right. I think we do that. And as you mentioned, Mr. Peralis, I think the economic development, talking about the holistic planning is worthwhile.
All right. On the final page, compensation. I know I've talked to each of you about this. This is a hard one. I'm recommending a range of 250 to 295. I don't know that you'll hire at 295 if you had that opportunity, but my suspicions are that with the market where it is, you'll be hiring in the neighborhood of somewhere between 260 and 280 is my sense for the kind of manager that each of you are thinking you're looking for.
I question if we could push it down to 230. Not that we would anticipate hiring at that level. It certainly gives us a larger range. Looking at some of the comparable, like where the port ended up, you know, I mean, we might be able, and obviously it's a smaller, you know, organization, smaller budget. I don't know that, to your point, we'll be anywhere beneath 260 to 280. We probably won't. And obviously, dropping it probably won't, won't necessarily attract more people, but there may be an opportunity to utilize deferred comp or something. So.
Well, I don't think there's a downside.
Okay.
Dropping it, I'm happy to do that. Dropping the upside would have more of a, pardon the pun, more of a downside at that point. Yep.
Understood, Mr. Harpster.
Okay. Yeah, the, I thought, fine, going down to 230, I thought salary range was exactly where I'd expected to be. Two cities of consideration, and I looked at several today, is Kennewick very recently hired his new city manager at 230. And this year, at some point, we'll pass Kennewick in being the biggest city of the four. And then Moses Lake, who's, they're only about a third of our population, their new city manager is at 250. So more than all the city managers here. Just for comparison, take Bottles at 214, Kirkland 267, Auburn 220. And so when I look at what we want, you know, in this brochure here, it's going to take a, a good chunk of money. And I think it's worth it to set the city up long-term, beyond our terms. So 295 does kind of give me wide eyes, but I, I think we really need to be open towards that 270, 280 and not try to, you know, cheap skate this, or else that's the result that we're going to get.
You know, it's interesting. Good comments, by the way. Thank you. And I agree with your research. The one added comment around that research, and we've noticed this, is like, a lot of times, city councils will go with a smaller dollar figure and a much, much higher deferred compensation figure. And so many of the managers that you reference there are getting 30,000 to 35,000 deferred compensation. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but that was my recollection when I went through that analysis.
Gotcha. That's helpful. Last comment I wanted to add, just overall, I just really love the look of this brochure and the information contained within. And it makes me really excited for the search and see what kind of candidates we get. So.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to staff who did outstanding work and to your staff too, who's been hugely helpful in getting information to us, finding the little details that we may have missed. So it's been a great team effort.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster and Mr. Peralis.
Thank you. Yeah, I was looking at the salary range and I was just thinking to myself over the weekend, you know, that's a lot of, a lot of dough.
It's high-watering. I agree.
And I don't know, is there something we could put in there that what the council's expecting hour, like a certain amount of working hours per week? I mean, I don't want a guy coming in here or gal working 40 hours a week and getting paid 250K. I, I, you know, I think there's an expectation of, that based on the challenges and opportunities that we're seeing here in the City of Pasco, you know, we're probably looking more at the 50 to 60 hours a week, working weekends, maybe even some holidays.
That was my experience as a city manager.
So I, I, I think that just needs to be said. And, you know, the person who ends up taking this job, there's a lot of work to do. And so I don't know if some wording can be put out there about hourly.
Well, screen for that absolutely in the interviews. But to your point, and I was looking at the education and experience section, with your permission, I'd like to beef that up to a little higher level. I might add a master's degree is preferred. And then also up the experience level to a minimum of, say, 10 years, what, at least six years in a senior management position. It speaks to what you're looking about. You know, we're looking for that, that, that very experienced manager who can come in, who has the background to run the city, a municipal corporation of this size, and to do it successfully. If that would be okay with council, I'll go ahead and make those changes also.
It's fine with me. Before you get, I got a thought. You mind if I hop on? Do we want to require residency requirement?
Um, you're not.
What's the prohibition or risk?
You don't have to anymore by state law.
Okay.
When they changed that about two or three years ago now, four years ago. The way you have handled that in the past, if council finds it very important for the manager to live in or very, very close to the city limits, is you oftentimes will pay a moving allowance. That can be upwards of $15,000 to $20,000 of one-time money. You can condition that as to where that person lives as a result of taking those funds. That'd be one way to execute it. I would have to talk to the barrister here about requiring it as part of the, the job. I don't know that you can right now, but I would defer to his opinion on that one.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I do recall that the, the law did change so that it was no longer a requirement. But I would have to see, like, I can take a look while we're going through other items and maybe.
If you don't mind poking at that right now or throughout the duration of the meeting, I do think we want someone to at least be, I mean, to Mr. Peralis's point to say, hey, I want to serve the City of Pasco. I don't want to live there. And I want to take, you know, a quarter million plus of the taxpayers' dollars. I, I really struggle to bite that off. And my question is, what's the level of commitment? Now, for whatever reason, someone may be interested from Kennewick or Prosser or, and absolutely qualified. And I understand the desire not to relocate from there. But if we do end up paying a relocation allowance, and maybe this is my like warning shot across the bow, if we end up paying a relocation, I will strongly advocate that that person lands in Pasco.
I think you could definitely do that, for sure.
If, again, we're hiring across the river, we're hiring, you know, from Cornell or what, I mean, I don't know who would want to drive into Cornell every day. That's, you know, a bit of a hike, at least for us on the east side. You know, an hour, two hours of traffic for the west side might not be a big deal. But anyway, point is, I think we should make sure that as we as an executive team kind of vet this, we want someone that's going to engage in the community, as Mr. Peralis already said. So Mr. Harpster?
Well, I think one of the things you want to avoid, if I could, if you don't mind me speaking to that point, is I know, not the current city manager, but the last city manager in Yakima held a residence in San Amish still and was commuting back and forth for, and it was, I think it was awkward for everybody is my sense. So I do appreciate the fact that if you're going to be here, you should be here. So.
Yeah, I was going to provide my support for your comments. That was one thing that I didn't even think of when reading through it, but had already thought of that. I think we should absolutely make residency in Pasco a requirement for the exact same reasons you stated. If you're going to be, you know, the, the CEO of this city really should, should live in it. And then also, Mr. Prothman's point, I had thought about, and I meant to provide comments on, upping the requirement to be 10 years experience as well as a master's. And my first thought was, I have a bachelor's and I'm certainly not qualified to run the city. So what we're looking for, like in our conversation, it was clear that that person would need 10 years of a master's at a minimum. And so I'd be in favor of that as well.
You know, a master's degree nowadays is like the union card for city managers. Now, 90% of them have them. But you will find a manager who has a, you know, a real solid, might have a double bachelor's degree and the requisite experience that you're looking for. So that's why I say master's degree preferred or any combination of experience. So it leaves you the flexibility of hiring that person you're hoping for.
I think I'm with that. No, Mr. Zabel?
Greg, Mayor, Council, I want to suggest maybe on the residency, consider the urban growth area because we have such a, we're rapidly growing into that. And we're doing annexations even now. So just a suggestion, that, that still keeps them very close and in an area we're either going to be grown into or shortly, or at least within the next several years.
Yeah, I think, I, I think, you know, it sounds like probably not putting it out right now, but as you vet people, seems to be of a strong conversation. And to Mr. Zabel's point, you know, Pasco or currently Pasco adjacent, future Pasco, I think is totally reasonable. And again, you know, if we have strong folks from across the river that don't want to uproot because they're in a good school system, that their kids have been in or are in or whatever, I think there's obviously some leeway for us to help you make that call or you to help us make that call, however that works. So I, I just, as long as, again, we don't have someone trying to commute from a place where they're just going to touch and go.
You know, we're looking for someone to stay for a minimum of five to seven years. I mean, that's the goal of the exercise here. And that means moving a home, moving a family, becoming, you know, ingrained into the organization and into the community. Those are the people that stay the longest. So.
So to that point, and I'll close my comments down here, I wonder if in the bullet points for the city manager, some sort of longevity statement, you know, really, you know, the page four, those bullet points you have, and I think, you know, Mr. Peralis mentioned the ability to connect with the community, that final bullet point of outgoing personality, maybe there's an opportunity to slide in, you know, ability to work with the community and serve, you know, community service oriented, something of that nature to throw into that. And then again, another bullet point that indicates we're really looking for longevity. That way, no one gets caught off guard after a second interview of like, what, you want to be, me to raise my kids here for how long? Which we all know Pasco is the shining jewel of the state. No one would ever question that, but we might as well put it out there.
Sure.
That's all I've got. I don't know if anyone else has anything else.
All right. Let me recap what I think I heard. There were no changes to the front page. I didn't hear any changes to page two or page three. On page four, we're going to find a place to put action-oriented in those comments. At the bottom, we're going to talk about a connection to the community and also service-oriented, service-oriented, and hopefully staying five to seven years are the themes that often build that in somewhere. Over on the challenges and opportunities, we will take imitated into something else. Thank you. And then I'm going to take note of service reductions as one of the opportunities for maintaining a fiscally healthy organization. And we'll cover that in the interview part of it. And then lastly, under economic development, we will add the term strategic plan somewhere in that conversation to ensure that's one of the goals. Then moving to the very last page, we'll move the bottom end of the salary range to 230,000 and then up to, and 295 will stay put. And then we'll beef up the experience, six years of, into 10 years, and then add a master's degree preferred. Okay? Did I miss anything?
I think that captures everything and then we'll deal with the location as we get it.
And then we'll cover that when we, when we get down to brass tacks with the finalist candidate.
Sounds good.
And then last but not least is, this is our schedule. Have we sent copy? I can't recall if council has a copy of this or not.
It's not in the packet.
Okay. It will be sent to you here shortly because we're actually on schedule somehow. We're still, we want to keep it that way. So we'll get working as of tomorrow. And again, you all have my cell number. Please don't feel shy about using it if you have any extra additional, additional comments that come to you afterwards, okay?
Excellent. We appreciate your time and energy here.
And thank you for the opportunity to be here. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Take care everybody.
Thanks for coming down. Glad you're starting to feel better.
Yeah, thank you.
That opens it to public comment. Do we have any public comments on this issue? And I'm not quite sure how I'd weigh pro or con, but we'd figure it out if we have more than four comments or three comments. Going once.
Going once, going twice, third time, the excitement of city governance. Thank you for your time. With that, we'll move on to item B, which is Benton Franklin Council of Governments or BF COG, regional traffic count analysis, uh, for the city of Pasco. It's presentation. Uh, it says Director Sarah, but I'm not seeing Director Sarah at this mic, so I'll let you introduce our guest.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we have with us, um, representative from Benton Franklin Council of Governments. And that is Tanner Martin. He's a regional planner and he will tell us about the traffic count analysis and all the work that has gone into it and some of the findings.
Thank you, Sarah, for that introduction. Um, again, I am Tanner Martin. I'm a regional planner at BF COG. We, uh, convene local governments, develop long and short range plans, um, and conduct studies like the regional traffic count program. Um, and I will just move forward on that. Do I, I click the presentation? Okay, awesome. Okay. So as an overview of what the regional traffic count program is, um, BF COG, we launched it in 2016. It is conducted every two years to collect, uh, vehicle volume. So the number of vehicles, the type of vehicles, anywhere from motorcycles to large semis. Um, and then the speed that vehicles are traveling on a corridor. All right. So a little pop quiz. Does anybody know how we collect traffic count data around the region? No one? Um, they are the pneumatic tube counters. So those little tubes that, uh, you drive over. I'll be honest, before I started working at BF COG, no idea, I had no clue what they were. But, um, yeah, those little tubes, they can collect a lot of data that shows what travel patterns are. And then as far as, does anybody know when the, uh, data is collected? Any important times? Okay. So it's, it's midweek, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and it's in the spring and fall. So no summer break, no winter break, spring break to make sure that, uh, the past data aligns with current data and collects school bus and, um, all normal daily average, average daily travel, travel patterns. Alrighty, so as you see this graphic right here, there's cars flying everywhere. Luckily, none of them have hit yet. And, um, that's where we all want to get to, right? Um, but that's what, uh, the importance of the count program is, is it monitors travel patterns where people are going every day and, um, it provides data that supports planning such as, uh, congestion management, travel demand modeling, and then it also helps guide where projects should be, um, developed. It guides the infrastructure investments and then as well, um, council member, uh, Charles Graham, he's on our BF COG board. And every year there are dues, um, that are paid to us. And a portion of that does go towards, uh, funding a consultant to go out there and lay all the tubing and provide that data and, um, provide insight on what, what's going on around our region. Okay, so fun facts. Uh, it, you can see the map here, Washington, Oregon, California, Alaska and Hawaii. It is, we were informed that it is actually the largest tube count program on the west coast. And I want to emphasize on tube count, um, there, as new technology seems to come up almost daily. Um, a lot of agencies have moved towards AI detection or, uh, traffic signal cameras or even GPS on your phones. Um, and so we've kind of stuck with the pneumatic tube counters as it's been consistent. It's what we've done in the past and we're going to do a count in 26. We're going to review all of the other methods and kind of compare and see what, what comes about with that. So in 2024, we collected data at a total of 718 sites throughout the region in Benton and Franklin counties. Um, and then 124 of those were located in the city of Pasco. Alrighty, so with that data, as we started back in 2016, we were able to kind of do a bit, a bigger analysis on travel patterns throughout the region and in each jurisdiction. Um, you can see that the 2021 year kind of has an asterisk next to it as COVID-19 really kind of messed up everyday traveling with all the restrictions. But, um, once those were lifted, we decided to do, run a program in 2021. Um, and it kind of bled into 2022. So it was more of a 20 late, mid to late 21 to early 2022 and then got back on the every two years in 2024. Um, so the, the analysis, it, what, what we started out with was identifying the corridors or the count locations that, um, recorded the highest average daily traffic. And then it also identified, uh, count locations with the highest amount of heavy vehicle use. So the percentages, excuse me. So, um, a heavy vehicle, it's kind of, I know there's the freight and goods movement. Um, it's a little different than freight. It is any type of vehicle above a passenger van or a, say, a Ford F-150. So any duly trucks and then all the way up to school buses, transit buses, and then all the way up to large multi-axle, uh, freight semi trucks. So fun facts about the city of Pasco. You can see the map here. There's, um, there's five locations numbered from one to 22, you can see there. Uh, so we did an analysis of the 25 locations that recorded the highest average daily traffic throughout the entire region. And there were five in Pasco. And then crazy as it sounds, uh, the Road 68 location just, um, north of 182, it was the highest recorded average daily traffic in the entire region. So for each jurisdiction, some, some didn't have a total of 10, uh, count locations. But we did an analysis on the top 10 that had them. Um, and as you can see up there, Road 68 had just under 50,000 vehicles as an average daily volume. Um, and then it kind of, the other locations were Broadmoor, Court, Burden, um, 20th and rounding out at the bottom is Burden at a little over 19,000. And I'll further go into further detail about the highlighted, um, locations. As you can see, the numbers there, again, those are the top 10. Um, and oddly enough, the only one that didn't, uh, have an increase in, um, volume was the Road 68 location. Um, but that, that can play a major role into new roadways as, um, the city of Pasco is continually building and growing. Um, so the other two are highlighted, Broadmoor and Court Street West. Um, the Court Street West of 395 is just under 22%. And then the Broadmoor north of I-182 was just over 24% volume increase. And that's comparing the 2016 data to the 2024, not an overall increase over all four years that were, that data was collected. Alrighty, and so with that, we also broke down a heavy vehicle percentage of those top 10. Um, and they continued highlighted as they recorded the top three heavy vehicle percentage. And again, that's from school buses all the way up to hu, uh, heavy semis and whatnot, multi-axle. And I just want to thank you all for having me here. Um, we love to get out in the region and, uh, I'll take any questions or if you ever want to reach out for, for the data, we have a lot of it. So please feel free and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the appreciate, thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Uh, definitely informative and learning about how we do things around here. Mr. Harpster, it looks like you have a question.
Uh, no question. Just a comment. Appreciate the data, uh, presented specifically the one showing that traffic on the 68, 182 corridor has gone down 3%.
Yeah.
You know, we always talk about that, that, uh, that area is not going to be fixed by fixing that specific area, but other intersection improvements around that area. So it's nice to see that, uh, the work being done around the city is improving that, if not, uh, little by little. So thanks.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Prowess.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, based on the data, what area should we prioritize? What, what project do you think?
Um, that's a good question. I think, I think the current construction as far as broad, what's going on at Broadmoor, um, and connecting to Road 68 would be, um, you know, alternate routes that get off of Road 68 would be the best. But, um, I don't want to lean on Maria, but, um, you know, that, that would be my guess for the city of Pasco.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Prowess. Uh, Mr. Grimm, we're going to hear a plug for Road 76 at any point?
Let's do it, Mr. Mayor.
I know, man, the bones there, buddy.
Um, Director Sarah well puts it, the best fix for Road 68 is not Road 68. And so I'm hoping, um, I know that the, the board met recently, um, to decide their list of projects that they're going to put forward and everything like that. And I know it's, I can't speak for everybody here on the council, but I think we would all love to see Road 76 get to the top of that list as obviously the data speaks for itself. It is the number one priority here in the Tri-Cities.
Yeah.
So thank you for your work, Tanner.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Well, I, I think that covers everyone up here. Really appreciate it. And I'm, I'm glad Mr. Grimm didn't miss his chance to continually lather for his pet project here. It was called the Grimm overpass, not like as a foreboding name.
Yeah, and I guess I will say too, it was great working with Maria as there was a lot of construction going on. And we did, you know, our consultant was like, hey, there's a lot going on. So we had to shift times of when we could collect data, you know, Court Street. We had to wait until, I believe it was mid-November because it was shut down in a certain spot for like a month. So. Maria's been amazing. She always is. Mr. Grimm's been amazing too. So, yeah, greatly appreciate it.
Well, it sounds like you're the third leg, leg of the amazing circle. So appreciate you, your hard effort and staff's effort.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
With that, that opens us to public comment on this issue. Do we have any public comments? Going once, going twice, third time. All right, you're up for the rest of the night. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
With that, that moves us on to item seven, which is short-term rentals, and this is coming from Ms. Pichon.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Council has shown interest in whether to permit short-term rentals in the city of Pasco. Tonight's staff is seeking direction, um, on if council is interested in formally permitting short-term rentals. I'll provide a brief summary of the information provided in your packet this evening to support discussion. Short-term rentals are defined as the rental of all or a portion of a dwelling unit for less than 30 nights. Short-term rentals are explicitly discussed in three areas of the Pasco municipal code. Um, one is allowing short-term rentals in the mixed-use district in Osprey Point. And then the other two are outlining parking requirements for commercial lodging, which includes short-term rentals in the Broadmoor overlay district and in the mixed-use district. In recent years, prior councils have approved, um, ADUs for long-term residential use. Uh, so they have to be used for 180 days out of the calendar year. And single-room occupancy or SROs were approved with a minimum of 30 nights stay or 30, uh, the minimum of 30-day rental. These references, references along with the definition of activities that provide for short-term rentals have prevented the city from explicitly endorsing short-term rentals in the past. Regionally, short-term rentals are not permitted in Pasco, Kennewick or Richland. Um, regionally, staff has confirmed that Pasco, Kennewick and Richland are recert, receiving the applicable tax revenue. So that includes lodging and sales tax from the Department of Revenue for short-term rentals. Um, and this is due to short-term rental sites, uh, being required to have the hosts maintain, um, a business license to the state, which requires them to remit those taxes to Airbnb. And then Airbnb takes that and, um, gives it to Department of Revenue for dispersment. Additionally, a provision of receiving a state business license requires the hosts to have liability insurance and meet consumer safety requirements. Some communities have chosen to formally permit short-term rentals with varying rules and regulations. For example, in high tourist areas such as Walla Walla, a moratorium has been placed on any new short-term rentals. If council is interested in formally permitting short-term rentals, staff will need direction on where they can be located, parking requirements, safety and inspection requirements, any operational rules that you were looking to put into place and department, uh, development of an application process and the fees. Alternatively, if formal permitting is not desired at this time, but council is seeking a formal action, staff can draft a resolution stating short-term rentals are welcome, um, as long as they're aligned with state requirements. Um, or if no formal action is desired, the city will continue to receive the revenue as it currently does. So very brief, um, but staff is here to answer any questions for your, to help your discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Pichon. Do we have any, Mr. Harpster?
So I, I had a hard time understanding if they're not express, if short-term rentals aren't expressly approved, are they prohibited? In other words, if, you know, I went on Airbnb this morning and looked at the ones in Pasco, could code enforcement go to those houses and cite them for something?
It, it would be a code enforcement issue at that point.
Okay, so because they're not expressly approved and they are by default prohibited, is that right?
That's the way in which, uh, staff does, um, that is how we've been proceeding with it. Yes.
Um, the, uh, I think my end goal with this is ensuring that people can have short-term rentals without overburdening them with all sorts of hoops to jump through. Um, so I'd be interested in doing whatever that takes. In the agenda report, I appreciate you mentioned that Visit Tri-Cities is doing a study on short-term rentals. And so it's not a, a quick solution. So they were going to take two to three years to do their study, but I'm probably fine with waiting until that's complete before we do anything else, given that it's going to be a regional, um, study on how short-term rentals would impact, uh, hotel taxes and, and other things in the area. So, um, again, it's two to three years away, but personally, I'm in a hurry. And so that just kind of leads up to the rest of council.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Mr. Prowess.
Thank you. So, so currently we get money from the Department of Revenue for short-term rentals?
Correct.
Okay, because they have to have a Washington state business license.
That's correct.
Okay. So when we talk about permitting, I mean, they're already operating in the city of Pasco, but we're not having them go through a proper permitting process at this point?
Correct. So talking with the city of Kennewick and city of Richland, um, they do not permit them as a use. However, they are allowing them as a use.
So essentially we developed some type of program or policies, we'd be regulating them essentially?
Correct.
Okay. I guess my, my intentions are, I don't know, I'm speaking for the rest of the council, was never to, um, burden, uh, short-term rental, um, short-term rentals with regulations. So if that's the case, then I say if we're getting money from Department of Revenue, um, you know, I don't see the issue with where they're operating. I, I would like to say that we're, I mean, put on letter, we welcome them and people can do what they want. They can buy properties and, um, develop their own little portfolio of short-term rentals. So I think at this point, that's, I just wanted to confirm that tonight. If that's the case, I'm, I don't, for me, I, I wouldn't be in favor of bringing anything forward to have a formal permitting process and have code enforcement going out there. I think we have other priorities, but if I'm understanding correctly, that's my understanding. So that we would be creating policies and a program to, I guess, regulate them.
Correct. And there would be for staff, I think there's some opportunity to clean up some language in the PMC um, because that's what they're looking to. Um, and that's where they can be a little in the gray area conflicted, um, trying to uphold policy. Um, so that would be an effort we would still look to do.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, no, that, that'd be fine. I just wouldn't want to burden anyone with, you know, that's, we're trying to deregulate staff, or at least I am, and other council members are. So I wouldn't be in favor of that. I think I'd be, would like to see a formal letter letting people know that Airbnb, Airbnb's are welcome, verba, whatever you want in the city of Pasco so that people can start making investments and promote economic development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowess. Ms. Blaisdough.
Um, I have one question. Um, do other cities charge a TPA tax per night?
Regionally, they do.
They do? For short-term rentals?
I would have to check in on the, the TPA portion of it. And I think that's one of the things that Visit Tri-Cities is going to be working in to their, to their, yes.
That's the only thing that I guess would be questionable just because that would be more, um, for Visit Tri-Cities and more marketing dollars that we could use to promote the area. Um, I'm not, I don't want to say that I'm not a fan of, um, short-term rentals just because it's harder on the hotels. If hypothetically, just so you guys have. hypothetically, just so you guys have a, I guess, an understanding coming from a hotelier. Um, if you have a construction group that comes in and they have fifteen rooms for seven days, and they go and rent a, one house, that's taking heads and beds away from the hoteliers. That's, that'd be my biggest concern, um, but there's people that are doing short-term rentals anyways. Um, so, I'm kinda, I guess, on the fence about it. I would like more information, but the TPA money is probably my biggest concern, because we would want to get our fair share.
And I will get that answer for you.
Thank you, Ms. Blais though, Ms. Peralis.
I, um, you know, reading through this, reading through the, um, suggestion for the Visit Tri-Cities to do their research, I'm in favor of waiting, um, to see their results. And I'm positive that they will come back with suggestions for, for policies to follow up. Um, but I am in favor of waiting for the Visit Tri-Cities research and, and just following up on their, um, data, their input. Means two to three years away, probably sooner than that, but I think it'll give us a, a better insight on how to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Peralis. Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with Councilmember Peralis that, um, as much government oversight as we can keep out of it as possible would be to the best. But I also appreciate what our Assistant City Manager said, and I'd be curious what our legal analysis is that if, just, I guess, just to find out if there's just been nuisances in other cities and if there's any mitigations or anything we need to do that could curtail, um, known issues that have happened in other cities. But at the same time, it sounds like we haven't had a lot of those issues here, but, um, would definitely want to be respectful of neighbors if there's, um, known issues. So yes, I would tend to lean towards what Councilmember Peralis said, but at the same point, um, if there are ongoing issues in other cities that, um, maybe a little tweak could fix, I would certainly want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to take my two bookends here, Mr. Peralis and Mr. Grimm, I think you're in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then I've got the two next to me who are in favor of waiting two plus years, and one who hasn't given a timeframe. So my perspective is this, I think, um, I, I think staff could do some research now, um, and give us some guidance. One, one thing I will note, I got an email, uh, it was just a cold-out, well, probably not a cold, having read the packet, presumably Airbnb's policy analyst, and I forwarded that to Mr. Zabel. I don't know if others received that. So I think to the extent that Airbnb may or may not have data, I think that could be relevant and helpful. Um, I do think if we do move forward, and one of the things that I would like staff to look into is, uh, in particular, the parking issues and other space sharing, uh, that could, to Mr. Grimm's point, create a nuisance or some sort of issue, um, obviously, I'm not gonna say a prohibition on playing loud music or anything silly like that, but you know, something where there's true shared facilities that are owned by the city, um, that could, again, prohibit the use of a neighbor or someone within the neighborhood. So I'd want to make sure that whatever we do, uh, as much as a fan as I am of not being super prescriptive, we want to make sure that we're not infringing on someone else's use of their own property. So, do you think parking would be one thing I'd like researched? Go ahead, Ms. Blais though.
Um, Mayor, just for clarification, uh, we do have, um, ordinances that allow us to dictate some of the nuisance and parking, where parking in this particular case might be multiple people versus what we would view of a household. So there are code enforcement measures that we can take that would not have to be dictated to just short-term rentals. Would you like for us to clarify and maybe work on more of the educational realm, maybe?
Yeah, I think where education can be helpful, yes. Uh, the only reason I mention parking is I read it here and it's fairly nebulous, you know, in subsection whatever, number four, just says there will be no demand for parking beyond that, which is normal to a residential area, no unusual or excessive traffic from the premises. Uh, to me, that's not clear. I have two cars, I have a camper at my house, you know, that I park there because I got a side yard, right? Like, um, when my kids start driving, I may have five cars, right? So, I just, you know, the, understanding what a, a normal use is, I think, and again, in a way that doesn't impact the neighborhood, um, to me would be helpful. As to whether or not we need to put it in zones, I don't think that's necessary. But again, if our, uh, data dictates or something of that nature, that's fine. But I, I'm, I'm with the bookends here that I think if we can move on this, something that we've talked about, and maybe prod Visit Tri-Cities and see if their two to three years could be expedited, uh, coupled with whatever, again, lower level research, and this isn't to me like, you know, burning priority, uh, but something that I do think, we've talked about it several times now, let's, let's at least move it. And, um, move it now, not, again, don't have to come back with something like imminently, but also poke Tri-City, Visit Tri-Cities to see if maybe they're gonna move quicker than two to three years. Does, that make, first, does that make sense from staff? And then second, do we have kind of a consensus that's a good way to go? Mr. Harvester?
Yeah, I'd support what you want to do there. The, I, I'm just a little slow in the uptake tonight, so. Currently, short-term rentals are not allowed, but they, 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 sorry? But yeah, but they're not prohibited, but they could be allowed without some kind of intense permitting process. They could be just allowed outright.
So they're not a permitted use, but?
They're an allowed use?
I'm not saying they're an allowed use, but, um, right now it would be a code enforcement, it would go through code enforcement if, if it was, um, a complaint was filed.
Because it's not, because it's not currently an allowed use.
I, I can, uh, oh, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, so I, Council, if I, I, I think we're kind of walking a little bit of a slippery slope to where they're not a permitted use. So we're not necessarily allowing them now, we're just not taking code enforcement action on them. Whatever we do going forward, though, we start to, you're short of a permitting process. We, we start to then create rules and so forth, and if this council or future council wants to dial it back, now we're taking something away from somebody, right? So the more you formalize it now, the more difficult it may be later on to, to tighten it up. If you, if, if you do start to realize or start to experience that you're getting nuisance issues like parking, or, I won't say noise, because that could happen at any home, but, uh, and it's probably more in the single, single-family zone than anyplace else, because most, uh, apartments are gonna have, uh, prohibitions against subletting the apartment and so forth, and we don't, we have some condos, but not a lot of them. A lot of those probably have CCNRs that would control that as well. So we're probably more talking about single-family than, than anyplace here. And so I, I think, uh, you, you probably do need to do something more than not permitting. When the alternative is if somebody were to complain, and we are a complaint-driven code department, our code enforcement people are gonna have to do something, and probably that's gonna be citing the property owner for running an unpermitted, uh, SDR, short-term rental.
Okay, and that's, that's kind of where I was getting at, was I think we'd be more in favor of what Mr. Peralis, Grimm, and Serrano mentioned, that let's see what we can do now and study from Visit Tri-Cities, maybe, uh, Ms. Blais, I think's on that board, could talk with Mr. Lewis about why that's a three-year timeline and perhaps do it sooner.
Does that help staff? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think just leaving it in the nebulous area of maybe is probably not the best answer. If we can get beyond maybe, that would be helpful. Maybe have you present what it would take to get to that next level of not giving too much of a bundle of sticks, but also not being able to sort of not enforce it would be helpful. Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I'll just throw out that, uh, so far, I don't, I don't believe we've had a code issue, have we? We haven't had a code issue because nobody's called.
Right.
And I know hard, council's gonna have a hard time believing this, but sometimes people will call into codes, not because they're really bothered by what's happening, but because they don't want it to happen.
Fair enough.
Right.
Appreciate it. See you, Mr. Peralis, if you'd like.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I was just gonna ask, so if Airbnb's, I guess they're not allowed by our code, then why doesn't the city just go and shut them down? Okay, so they have to be a complaint. And so that, that's what I was getting at, I guess, that was, I felt like, oh, well, I, I felt like maybe we were kind of creating a new code arm, and it doesn't really sound like there needs to be nothing created, because there's not really a problem. So, I guess, you know, Angela's trying to say they're, well, they're not allowed. So, from our city standpoint, I mean, are they allowed, are they not allowed, permitted use? Because the way I see it is, I don't want to create any burdensome regulations for something that, you know, they're not permitted, but what's, what's the point? Until we start hearing more complaints about them, I, I don't see an issue. And if that's the position from Richland and Kennewick, they don't, I mean, that's what I got from the individual at City of Kennewick that I talked to when I was doing my research, and they don't, we don't, we don't regulate them, we don't, we don't hear nothing about them. So people can just have at it. So, if that's the case, you know, I don't want to, we have many other pressing items for staff to work on, and so I would hate for you guys to do all this research, and really, I think at this point, perhaps just wait on the Visit Tri-Cities study. Um, I'd be interested in getting that, some of that TPA money, you know, on some of these, uh, rentals, uh, short-term rentals, maybe. That's when we have to kind of start regulating them, but, you know, for me, I, I think what I, what, what we hear is from constituents or people who want to start Airbnbs is that they're not allowed. So it's like, what's the legal wording we have to promote? Or under, get, understand that, I guess they are allowed, but they're not permitted, because we're not permitted and we're not regulating them. So maybe perhaps Mr. Ferguson needs to do a little research and provide us with some, you know, information about what we're talking about here, rather than kind of just working through like, we're gymnastics, because it's like, okay, they're not allowed, but then why don't we shut them down, type of thing, so. Then that's where I'm at, but I, I feel like I have a, it's, it's clear as mud for me now, but as far as I'm concerned, it seems like Airbnbs and Verbos, and they're, they're allowed in City of Pasco, and we're not gonna regulate them, at least, I'm, I'm not gonna promote that.
So, maybe rather than a presentation, we get a memo. That's staff thoughts or recommendations with some legal analysis of what exactly the current status of these things are in Pasco. And a risk-reward proposition of if you formalize this, X could happen. If you leave it as is, Y could happen. Is, is that, is that helpful to council? Is that clear to staff? Okay. I think, uh, we can move on into public comment unless someone else has anything on this. Do we have any public comment on this issue? Going once?
Yeah.
Thomas? Or Mr. Grandwa, uh, whatever you want me to call you. But we do need, uh, like, yeah.
It's all good. Thomas works. Uh, Thomas Grandwa, Big Maple Properties, one oh eight North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. Uh, first of all, sorry, I didn't realize that you got it started at six, so I did have one thing about the, uh, the city manager position, instead of making a requirement to live in the area, maybe incentivized by having a bonus for living in the area. I think that that provo, that makes for a little bit of ownership in the, uh, living in the city. Um, so, let's talk about short-term rentals. I, as a landlord myself, I have multiple doors. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, but I think it's, I think a lot of you have touched on really important parts, um, about, about nuisances, about uses on properties. Uh, you just look at, look at how many people came out that were upset because people were driving ten miles an hour over the speed limit. And look at the pull that hap, that had to happen to drop the speed limit down, just because of ten miles plus over the speed limit. Look at the amount of people who came out that were upset about the idea of putting a commercial space within their, uh, residential area. So I see that there's a lot of opportunity for, for folks to be upset about that. Um, now, so there, so party houses can be a big deal. I don't know how many of you got, traveled to cities and gone to have a party or bachelor party, whatever, but there's that opportunity. Next thing that you did touch on is parking. Uh, my very first meeting that I attended was back in twenty sixteen. It was specifically around parking and the fact that there wasn't clear enforcement in that area. And right now, where I live, most of you know where I live, there, there are major congestion issues with folks buying vehicles, leaving on the streets, taking up street inventory, and it takes over two weeks bef, to even start the process for vehicles to, to be towed or moved or ticketed. So I think that this is an opportunity to look at that and see if maybe, maybe you can do some better, uh, enforcement. Now, the next thing is noise. You guys touched on that. Um, again, in my neighborhood, there are issues with loud parties on a regular basis. And our noise ordinance is a little bit aged, and a lot of times when enforcement happens, we're just talking about subsection A. And when the enforcement folks come out and take a look, they just look at subsection A, but then there's B, C, D, E, F, G, H. So I think that there's opportunity to dial that up, dial that in, and improve enforcement. And that is two minutes. Wow, that's a lot faster than used to. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speeding through, pun intended. Um, with that, do we have any additional public comments? Going once, going twice, third time? Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to item D, which is application for access easement or driveway for two thousand and five. West Lewis Street parcel number one one nine four eight one zero two six, and that's coming from Mr. Raymond.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, Councilmembers. Good evening. Uh, back in nineteen sixty-eight, uh, West Lewis Street was designated as a limited access facility through ordinance thirteen oh four, uh, next slide please, which was later amended in nineteen seventy-six under ordinance eighteen twenty-four. Uh, the significance of being designated a limited access, uh, roadway is that owners along these routes do not have automatic guaranteed access, uh, to that roadway. In fact, according to PMC ten point eighty-five point zero four zero, the city council is tasked with the, uh, the determination as to whether granting access is detrimental to the stated policies in the code. Uh, next slide please. On this slide, you can see somewhat in the, in the orange, uh, the, where the subject site is, its relationship to West Lewis and Twentieth, and then ultimately US three ninety-five. Next slide please. As you can see, uh, the classification of Lewis Street is a principal arterial and also has direct access to three ninety-five. There are currently seven existing driveways over a span of approximately four thousand feet, and the posted speed limit is forty-five miles an hour, and is a, a five-lane, uh, section, uh, profile. Next slide. There are numerous factors for the council to consider, uh, including traffic safety and circulation, sequence of relevant, uh, factors or events that perpetuated the perceived need for the easement, and whether other options could be pursued as an alternative. In this slide, as you can see from the map, there are existing options for access that could be considered, uh, for any proposed use. In this case, there are existing access easements and common ownership, so further easements, if they're needed, uh, should be relatively simple. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the council has the following options to consider. That is to either deny the application, approve the application with conditions as determined, uh, by the council, or approve the request as submitted, and, uh, staff is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Uh, looks like Mr. Peralis.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start it off. Um, I'll, I'll just go ahead and say I agree with the number two point. I, I would say we just agree as submitted. Um, we got an email earlier with a, um, hypothetical turn lane. I, I assume it's gonna meet city standards, and if not, they'll work through those, but, I mean, at this point, I think this development needs a different, uh, access, and it would work great off of Lewis Street. I'm not sure if perhaps the applicant or, um, would have to work with the WASTO. Would they have to work with that, given that it's a principal arterial? No, not at all, so this is based on, it's okay. Um, yeah, I, I don't see an issue with, and I was waiting to see some type of, um, evidence or anything that maybe city staff wouldn't like to see it happen, but based on not seeing anything, I, I feel like, um, the second option would, is the most beneficial, and I, I take it it's commercial, it's commercial property, and so they're looking to probably perhaps put some type of restaurants or something in there, and we need more commercial businesses. And I think this thing needs, needs better access than what we're seeing right here, um, especially with that easement and stuff like that. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond, at this point, on the data we have, is there any risk associated, oh, Mr. Harvester, um, I'll get to you in, sorry. Uh, with any particular speed limit or any, any type of having the turnout there? Do we have data on that, traffic count, speed count?
I, I might defer to, uh, Director Sarah, uh, but I'm not aware of any specific data specifically speaking to this request.
That is correct. So there are traffic counts, it's not a very high volume speed. Uh, the restriction for access as stated in the, in the code is specific to safety, because it's a major through corridor and it's an arterial, but, um, at this point, also, we do not have because it's a major through corridor and it's an arterial. But, um, at this point, also, we do not have an application for um, future use. So current use, uh, has been functioning off of the existing easement. So there is not additional information to evaluate the safety of the access, and even if there are restrictions to that access as far as riding only or, or not. And so, uh, without that information, really, as of today, there is, there is not an analysis to be done.
Okay. I, I think, you know, one of my concerns was having a turnout lane. Uh, I didn't know, I mean, I guess it's fairly close to a four-way intersection. So presumably, when someone comes from red, they're not going to be revved up too high. But if someone's got a flat green, uh, they may, or yellow, they might be speeding, uh, which was where naturally I was inclined to look at exit, seeing if there was a way to increase the easement to the north of the property, um, ahead of jumping into this. I don't know if that's even a viable solution for the applicant. Um, but that was kind of my first gut thought. Um, I'll defer to Mr. Zabel and to you, Mr. Harpster.
So just, just in response to that, uh, question, so, and it was referenced a couple of minutes ago, there, there was a drawing sent a little earlier. And that drawing is not a recommendation by staff. That drawing just represents, uh, something the applicant's engineer submitted uh, some time ago when he first started talking to staff about this, uh, particular, uh, request. And, uh, that first submittal and the conversation that went along with it got us to tonight. And there, there isn't necessarily an analysis, uh, that needs to happen in advance of council's decision. Would, would the council consider allowing driveway access off there? Off of Lewis? The analysis will occur when there is a proposal to actually do it. And, you know, my sense, I'm not necessarily involved in development, uh, day-to-day, but we've got professional engineers looking at that, professional engineer, and their analysis in terms of, uh, proposing it and what measures, uh, would make that safe. Like, and again, reviewed by the city as well, uh, in doing that. So that's really not necessarily council's charge tonight is determining whether it's safe or not, it's mainly whether or not would be allowed or not. And if, if through that analysis, we determine that it, we can't make it safe, like, I would envision we'd probably come back to council and tell you that. I, I don't know the conditions well enough to know whether that's, uh, even a possibility or not, whether we'd come to that conclusion. But, uh, there are other driveways, for instance, off this road. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, I'm with Mr. Prowls. I'd be in favor of this. And, um, a couple of points, it's, it's not really an easement so much as it maybe technically is, but it's just creating legal access to the property, which currently doesn't exist today. Um, and also note, like the staff report did, that there's several other driveway accesses along this stretch of Lewis Street that have been there for a long time. Um, the proximity to the intersection, I mean, it, it could be as close as 300 feet, as far as 500, give or take, but that's even further away than, um, 68 in Burden headed northbound. Uh, you've got the entrance to the gas station just after passing Burden, then you got two entrances into Yokes, um, all within 300 feet. Um, so I don't, this, this seems real simple that, um, I think council should give approval for the driveway access and let the applicant and staff work on determining, uh, exactly where that would be. Thanks.
Do any, Mr. Prowls?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I, I just hope, again, I, based on the, I, I, the, the plan we got earlier, I mean, it's not really here for us to consider looking at this, but it's a good aid. And based on what I'm seeing, um, I mean, we can do traffic counts and a study. But based on what I'm seeing, I mean, it looks, looks like a dedicated turn lane heading west. So if you're heading west on Lewis, so you would peel off. So I, I think that is relatively safe. But I'll defer to the traffic engineer. But I, I don't like the fact that, oh, well, there's, and access easement on the other side, and that's been used. And, I mean, that's not really the point. And that's, if that's the case, then from here on out, are we setting a precedent where easements are, are roadways now? And access ways for a lot of these businesses and stuff? I just, I don't agree with that. And I think it would, it would bode well and promote economic development by allowing this. So I hope we're not setting the foundation right now to say no. So I'm not trying to pick apart your words, Mr. Zabel, but it's just like, well, I don't know if it's safe. And it's like, so are we just kind of like showing our cards now that we can go through this process, say yes now, but then we're just going to say no later? And again, I just, you know, I think there's a lot of access issues on this road, and, and I'm just trying to pull up the map, but, I mean, there's other places that people are turning left and right off of Lewis Street. So, I mean, again, I, we know, we do understand our code is a little dated, so maybe we need to start looking at this along this whole strip. Um, but like I said, I, I just wanted to make that comment before, but again, uh, before I get off here. But again, I'm, I'm for number two, let's just allow it, and then we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comment? Uh, Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, just, just real quick, and I want to clarify, and I don't know the answer to this question, but I think it may be, uh, help for the discussion, which is this, this particular action that is before you right now is related to the code 1085. So that created a limited access road. And so that was a, that was part of what that ordinance did. What this process would be, would be able to allow an access easement. So this is the first step you would have to do because it's not even allowed in the code. Now, and again, I don't know the answer to this question, but I assume that it would still have to go through whatever typical M2, MUTC, whatever, that whatever the acronym is for all the safety standards would still have to comply. This is just a matter, you can't even do, that you can't even start that analysis about whether safety is met, uh, if you haven't even done this. I think that's right. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that this is kind of the first step to what's in your, already in your code.
Thank you. Um, I, so a handful of us have spoken on this. Um, is kind of the notion that we would move forward and let the professionals analyze this?
I would be for, yeah, seeing if we could allow access.
I'd be for it, too.
With that, do we have any questions from staff?
Yeah, so we would have to, uh, depending on what the further analysis comes back with at that point, then we would have to move forward with, uh, how, what the process is. And you can imagine, we don't do a whole lot of these, so we'd have to do some digging and find a good example to, to come back to you with. Because as, as the comment that Mr. Harpster just made earlier, uh, this is not a typical access easement in the sense of that you're granting someone the right to enter your property and, and cross over it, right? So typically, we have rights of way, you know, that, that allow access based on whatever, uh, other safety requirements already met. They're allowed to enter those rights of way. This, we created, uh, apparently, you know, on the right-of-way is created this limited access. So now, which kind of locks it in place. So now what you're doing is allowing legally folks to access your right-of-way because you've created a barrier to that now. So, um, that's the distinction. It's not accessing their property, it's them accessing yours.
Understood. And Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I thi, I think we're, staff was, we, we needed to know where council sat on this because we don't want to, if council wasn't willing to consider this, I would not want to put the applicant through the effort of doing the design, having a review on our side, the city's side, and make it a determination under what conditions this would be safe. Then come to you, and then later to find out that council didn't want to entertain it. So that's, that's kind of, we're chicken and egg thing kind of here going on.
I, I appreciate that, and that's fair. And I think, uh, the general sense, unless Mr. Grimm's going to throw a rock towards me, instead of, uh, get you all marching on whatever the process is with the applicant, uh, we'll leave that to you. But, Mr. Grimm?
No, I was just going to add, you know, I appreciate, um, our legal's point of view that it's a limited access road. The idea being that, you know, it's a thoroughfare. It's downtown's access to, to the highway there, and it's even 45 through there. So yes, I appreciate the sensitive, um, the sensitivity to that. But at the same time, it, um, does make sense to allow this applicant to have access to their property like that. So thank you.
Sounds good. So with that, it sounds like staff knows that, uh, what the direction is, right? Thank you. Uh, comments, comments from the public on this one? Crystal, if we can reset the clock? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Paul Knutson. That was Knutson Engineering, so I'm the applicant's engineer. We submitted an application for a new engineering plans, actually, for a driveway back on November 19th of this last year. Now, not even realizing with the survey that we had, the title report, there didn't show any restrictions that, on record, on title record, to know not having access off of Lewis. We thought it was simply a permitted action. We turned in a right-of-way permit that showed our engineered driveway. Um, a month later, uh, December 12th, we received the comments back that that, that ordinance mentioned 1085, I believe, from 1968, when Pasco was certainly a different town. Quite fortuitous when we see the BF COGS, uh, layouts of where the studies show the top 10, you know, highest impact of traffic, and it's not on Lewis Street. Uh, but it's Broadmoor and other areas and other driveways are closer to intersections. Um, we went back and forth with city staff, asking for the easement officially, the easement access back on shortly after December, December 18th, I believe. Um, I actually printed eight different sets of plans. I hope that's enough. If council, I didn't see it in the packet, so if it's worth sharing, I brought copies here to share. Uh, if you guys would like to consider these, because it wasn't in the packet. Perfect. No, I can't. Um, so, uh, back and forth. And finally, on January 13th is when we made our, our last submittal and told us, told the staff to take it off the hold. We'd like to have that considered. Now, what the, what the right action is, uh, from the council's part, uh, that, I mean, that's, Mr. Ferguson brings up a good point as to whether or not that's, uh, you know, just simply allowing an access easement to this right-of-way, which has restricted access. Maybe it's something more larger, such as maybe looking at amending the Pasco municipal code or that particular ordinance, which is over 50 years old. Um, Pasco's changed, and maybe it's, uh, maybe, maybe it's time for a change. But I went over my two minutes, I think. Thank you guys very much, and I'll leave these with the clerk. Thanks.
Appreciate your input there. Thank you. Um, do I, do we have any additional public comments on this? Going once, going twice. And I know the clerk will be sending those down for us. Going three times with that. We'll move on to the next item. Thank you again. Um, item E, which is introduction to revenue requirement analysis for water and sewer utilities. It looks like Director Sarah's going to kick this one off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. There we go. So we're going to be talking about water and sewer revenue requirements, and this will be a topic that we will revisit throughout, uh, the coming months. Um, this process will also look very familiar to you because we have already done it with two other utilities last year. And this time, we will be focusing on water and sewer. So you're seeing in the map our service area for water, that is, uh, portable water, and then sewer, which is our municipal wastewater utility. So we're seeing what the facilities look like. There are treatment plants, uh, conveyance system or collection system, pumping stations, and so on. And what this effort will look at is how to make these utilities continue to be sustainable, um, with their revenues to be able to meet all the obligations that already exist, such as, uh, operation and maintenance costs, debt service coverage, debt service repayment, and having reserves for the utility to operate, um, as well as covering capital costs. The analysis will also look at how those costs are allocated to different class, um, customers, classes of customers. And when we do this analysis, we look at each utility separately to really protect the different utility ratepayers so that it is an, uh, fair allocation of cost since our ratepayer base is different for each utility. And so when we look at rates specifically, we're really focusing on that, uh, continuous effort that is needed for the utility to be run, to be maintained, to be operated, uh, to cover for the cost that, that had been incurred, and of course, having that, uh, reserve, right? And so ensuring that our rates are set at such a dollar amount that allow for that utility to maintain, uh, the level of service and also continue to be sustainable. So financially sustainable, right? And when we talked about, um, connection fees or capital expansion fee, actually, we're looking at that system and we're looking at a couple of things. So how much money has been already invested in the system to have capacity available for new users to join in, as well as how much does it cost to expand capacity if the number of customers joining will exceed the capacity of the system? So this is, of course, highly regulated, and these analyses are performed to calculate a maximum connection fee possible or allowable. And, uh, just like we did for irrigation or even, uh, PWRF earlier, um, we will be providing, coming back, and providing, uh, the analysis results as long as, as well as, uh, alternatives for what does that rate and connection fee look like? And then alternatives on how to balance those to, to, um, meet our goal of having utilities that continue to operate and, again, maintaining level of service, right? Um, it is important to note that connection fees cannot pay for anything related to maintenance and operations. And so the connection fee really focuses on that capital expansion, the expansion of the facility or capacity that has been reserved for future uses. And of course, this is, uh, already seen by your calculation on how that maximum connection fee would be calculated. Uh, CC stands for connection charge, but again, this is capital expansion fee, connection fee, capital charge, all synonyms in this case. And so I did explain existing costs for capacity that is not quite used yet, so remaining capacity in the system that would be sold to new users or, um, future expansion needed in order to, uh, serve those new users. So that's, that's how this calculation is. Um, existing ratepayers are paying for the system that is providing service to them. New customers pay for, uh, the cost to support the additional demand, both on water and sewer. And so with that, so quickly introduction, the process is already underway. We're working through all the data requests and, and identifying, you know, in our capital plan, what is the purpose of each project, how much of the project really addresses existing deficiencies, how much is for expansion, and then allowing for that calculation to occur, looking at end balances and so on. So it's a complex process. We have, uh, FCS working with us in that process, and we plan to be back with results. So the next steps, today, we're doing the introduction to this item. Um, later in May, we plan to come back with results, and then we will work in an outreach to the community to share, uh, the findings and, and alternatives for both, uh, connection fee and rates. And then after the outreach is completed, we will collect all that feedback and do a recap, uh, here in the council meeting. And finally, our targeted adoption, uh, date is in July. And I will, um, just bring up something I missed before, which is when we did budgeting on, uh, CIP last year. We had noted that, uh, there were a lot of needs for the utilities, and, uh, the cost for running the utility have increased since the last time we did a rate study, which the latest rates went into effect in 2021, where, where then, um, planned to be increased um, throughout the following six years. So we're still within that period where those new rates are still uh, up, up, applying to the rates, uh, there today in order. But of course, that analysis was done before we knew fully what impacts of COVID, uh, could have in our utilities. So um, it is a good time to be revisiting those and evaluating what the cost of service is. Um, and with that, I hope I didn't, uh, go too long, just, uh, able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I think that was clear, and we look forward to continual discussion on the issue. Uh, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time. With that, we're going to move on to item F, which is the 2025, 2036 year Transportation Improvement Program revision by, again, Director Sarah.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. So this item, um, is pertaining the already approved Transportation Improvement Program. This, uh, program between 2025 and 2030 was approved last year by council. And, uh, the revisions proposed are to accommodate some, um, needs related to our traffic, or sorry, transportation impact. impact fees. So a quick recap of what was approved last year was a six-year plan for transportation improvements. The plan included 43 projects, three programs, and five studies. Out of those 43 projects, there are three revisions that are recommended by staff, and those are as follows. So Burns Road Extension used to be a single project, and we are proposing dividing it between the actual extension of Burns Road, that is between Route 68 and Convention Drive or Three Rivers West, and having the intersection be separate from it. This ultimately has no change in the dollar amount for the project, but is easier to track and cleaner in our analysis for traffic impact fees. We are proposing the inclusion of the Harris Road realignment. This is Harris Road on its eastern end, ties to Broadmore Boulevard in a location that is difficult to navigate currently with the current volume of vehicles and will become harder as more development occurs. We are proposing the realignment of this road to eliminate that connection to Broadmoor and instead connect to Sandifer. And I do have some graphics for this, but I'm doing the overview right here. And then finally, the inclusion of the Court Street and Route 100 intersection improvements. This item was discussed last year towards the end of the process of the TIP and found to be valuable as a safety and need for further control of that intersection as more volume is expected in both Route 100 and Court Street with development occurring. And so you are seeing just a quick summary of the first project we talked about. This is Burns Road Extension, the missing link, as we often refer to, and we would be splitting that project into two projects, again, an intersection project and a roadway extension project. No bottom line changes to the cost. Harris Road realignment, again, eliminating that, what we call dogleg, that ties close to the northern ramp on Broadmoor and I-182, and instead having that Harris Road continue north without that 90-degree bend that you're seeing in the screen, so as it's shown in the, in the blue color in the bottom. And finally, the Court Street and Route 100 intersection improvements, the transportation system master plan recommends a traffic signal there. I think there were discussions about having a roundabout. The, the plan would, the, sorry, the project will actually evaluate based on volumes and characteristics of, you know, behavior in the road, whether a roundabout is better, better suited for this location, and again, help mitigate the impacts of increased volume in both corridors and especially left turn lanes, left turn, left turns from both corridors onto, onto the other one, but mostly south, exiting the freeway onto 100 and then 100 onto Court Street. Okay, so not for you to review this in the screen, but we have highlighted in an orange, reddish color, the three items that are modified. There's four lines that are modified since one of the projects got divided into two. One is towards the top, it's probably line six, and then at the bottom of the 43 projects. So those, those could be the changes. And just recapping what the RCW mentions is that while this program needs to be adopted once a year, and we're already working on next year's version of it with you, we have already had outreach and we discussed it last week, this program can be revised at any time, provided the council has a majority vote on it. So the proposed plan is to make these revisions. Should council be in favor of it, there will be a public hearing in order to be able to act on it. The public hearing is scheduled for May 5th during a regular council meeting that is next week, and should council decide to do so, could pass a resolution to approve these revisions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Director Sarah? Seeing none, just from my perspective, I understand the splitting of the Burns Road is more for project management or internal tracking. Does there any, is there any potential benefit for grant applications? Like, we're taking two chunks of smaller dollar values, so that there might be more of them, or it might be easier to get an award?
Yes, that is correct. So the intersection improvement itself is more attractive as a standalone project, especially when we can verify volumes and crash data and other things, where the extension of the corridor is harder to be grant funded, because it's a non-existing connection.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I had some friends ask about the extension and, you know, how you're four-wheeling out there, even if you're not in a four-wheel. That said, that's the county's problem, but I guess becoming ours. No, I appreciate this thought of bifurcating the project, especially if we can get some of it paid for, or maybe all of it. Seeing no further lights, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time? With no comments on that, we're going to move along to item G, resolution, West Pasco Water Treatment Plant, Phase, Phases 3 and 4 Professional Services Agreement acceptance. With she who gets the kudos, she gets the work. You know, you got the kudos early in the meeting, now you get the heavy load. Ms. Sarah.
Thank you again. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This item is a professional services agreement for RH2 Engineering to provide design permitting and bid support during the design of the next set of improvements at the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. So this will be Phases 3 and 4, as shown in our CIP, and the purpose of these improvements is to expand the capacity of West Pasco to reach the 18 million gallons per day production mark, as a refresh. This facility has been operating since its original construction at 6 million gallons per day. Recently, Phases 1 and 2 have been able to expand that capacity 6 million gallons more, so we're at just about 12 million gallons a day. Yet, with the anticipated needs for Butterfield Water Treatment Plan to be replaced and a phased approach and having major construction, it is important we increase our reliability of service at the West Pasco facility. This will also help us meet the high demands in summer as demands increase. This is part of the original plan for the facility, and we have received a low interest loan from Department of Health to allow for this project to be fully funded through this low interest loan. Now, the improvements are listed in the screen, and it's a combination of treatment improvements like the membranes that do the filtering, as well as dealing with drying beds for the solids that are then discarded and dried out and hold away, increased pumping capacity, increased power reliability through generators, both at the plant and the intake facility on the river. It's like this. So the scope of this professional services agreement is for design, so full services of design, as well as support for permitting, getting the approval from the Department of Health for the construction, and then support during the bid process. And finally, this total dollar amount for this professional services agreement is not to exceed $749,753, and that is just under $750,000. This is consistent with cost for design of treatment facilities. This project is anticipated to be in the, just about $14 million of work. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harpster.
I'm just curious more than anything, when do we go with most qualified over low bidder?
Thank you. So most qualified is used for professional services, specifically engineering, surveying, and architectural services. Now, for construction, when we bid a project for construction, contractors are selected based on competitive bid rules, and so that is lowest bidder. So there is a way through Washington state law where bids can also be conditioned to supplemental criteria, where we establish specific set of qualifications besides just the price for the contractor to meet. For example, it's very typical in treatment facilities where we want to hire contractors that are the lowest bidder of those that have a certain set of experience. For example, have built a water treatment plant in the last 10 years, so that we're really not the learning ground for something critical like water or wastewater treatment. But again, as far as they meet those qualifications, then they're chosen based on the lowest bid price. On the other hand, when selecting consultants, like RH2 in this case, we are not allowed to consider price. We consider only experience, and then the negotiation of scope and fee happens after the selection has been made. Should we not reach an agreement and we're, you know, very far apart, not enough funding to hire them, there is also an opportunity for exhausting those negotiations and moving to the second most qualified, based on the scoring that has been done by a committee.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Looks like we have no further comments. Thank you for that presentation. I anticipate we'll see this in a future meeting for action. Do we have any additional, or do we have any public comment on this issue? Then once, twice, third time? With that, we're going to go to item H, which is request for zoning code text amendment and draft ordinance, amending Title 25 of zoning. Mr. Raymond, looks like you're getting your fair share of the light tonight.
Yeah, thank you. It's bringing this item back again this evening for further critique by the council and any other adjustments you may want to see prior to the next meeting on the 5th. The draft ordinance being presented tonight is brought as a response to emerging development opportunities, identified regulatory obstacles, as well as a perceived need to address policy gaps regarding the impacts of commercial drive-through uses. While researching potential ways to address these and other related ongoing issues, it was recognized that in 2021, CED staff did considerable work with the planning commission and presented a draft ordinance to the council at that time. And unfortunately, those issues were, or that ordinance was not officially acted on, but here we are today discussing it again. Several different types of businesses utilize drive-throughs in their service delivery to patrons from fast food restaurants and coffee shops to financial institutions and auto-related services. Each have their own unique characteristics and requirements that suit their business model, which in turn produce varying impacts on surrounding properties. In addition to individual design preferences, each site will present unique opportunities to emphasize and take advantage of, and/or present compatibility challenges, which may include vehicle and pedestrian conflicts, traffic congestion, noise intrusion, and potential artificial light trespass. As an example, a fast food restaurant or coffee shop drive-through may account for up to 70% of the business volume during key periods of time, but that other 30% may still heavily influence the need to account for pedestrian safety, ADA accessible site design, as well as compatibility with adjacent properties due to things like menu board speaker systems or idling vehicles, whereas a drive-through at a car wash may account for nearly 100% of the vehicle traffic volume, except for employee parking or vendor deliveries. So car washes would be unique from coffee shops in regards to perceived noise potential and should be addressed accordingly. Each business type will have different volumes and therefore require varying amounts of stacking potential in order to effectively manage onsite circulation, as well as potential offsite conflicts. This ordinance provides for flexibility in design relative to different business needs and potential, and it also provides for ample flexibility in design where sufficient documentation is provided that clearly demonstrates alternative measures will indeed accomplish important safety and compatibility priorities. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mr. Harpster.
I hope I can make it easy, but we'll see. I'd be in favor of amending the code as presented with these revisions or additions, rather.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, I do have a question. You kind of talked about opportunity for modifications. I'm not fully reading that. Where am I missing that, Mr. Raymond, for these allowances?
Good question, and let me get to it here.
I mean, I see certain ones maybe related to noise, and maybe that's the best one. I'm just trying to make sure. I'll give you kind of as you look, I'll speak kind of at you, but also to you. One of the concerns that I think I have is if we're going to revise a code, we tend to come, you, you come to us because the code's inflexible historically, and I'm not knocking the staff here. I mean, perfect example tonight, we may have to have an ordinance to repeal an ordinance or have an exemption to an ordinance. We're not really sure what we're doing with Airbnbs or not doing with them. Point is, if we're going to adopt something new, I, I would hope that we have flexibility built into it so that you're not constantly coming back to us to say, hey, this one's 112 feet instead of a, you know, or instead of 125, what do I do with the 13 feet? There's noise attenuation that really meets the threshold again, so long-winded way of asking. You mentioned built-in flexibility. I'm not quite seeing it. Maybe I'm reading over it.
Noise number four.
So yeah, I mean, I've noticed the noise, but is there anything else that should have flexibility of the stacking, or does that kind of achieve that attenuation and flexibility? That's, that's all I'm asking is, if we're going to adopt this, I'm good with moving forward as quickly as possible, but I want to make sure that we don't have like a stagnant code that you're going to come back in two months and say, holy cow, there are four businesses in the Broadmoor area, we got to modify this to get them there.
Yeah. Well, and, and those are very good comments and certainly a great question, and we do our best to foresee every possibility. Sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't, but definitely in 25.176070, more specifically under noise, number four, this is alternative measures designed to mitigate noise impacts may be permitted as authorized by the Director of Community Economic Development, where demonstrated through a noise mitigation study conducted by a qualified professional, that such mitigation measures adequately provide compliance with what is ultimately the underlying noise ordinance, PMC 9.130. You know, we provide prescriptive measures where they seem to make sense, because you, you know, the applicants and staff need a target to shoot for, but inevitably, somebody disagrees with that analysis or that requirement, or, you know, maybe doesn't have the room to, to provide it, or something along those lines. And we always do our best to leave open the opportunity for analysis, but sometimes when we ask for analysis, what we get in return is more of a, well, we just want to, or prefer to, or prefer not to. But we try to always leave that door open. That being said, we're also careful to be respectful of the council's authority to write the regulations and for staff to not overwrite those regulations without coming to you first. So we just try to find that balance. You know, you can also look at the competing demands between consistency and flexibility, because different parties really prefer one or the other, sometimes both, but you're oftentimes sacrificing one in favor of the other, and we always try to find that balance the best we can.
And I appreciate that, and again, I, I do recognize the noise, but you know, just for example, looking at some of the drive-through facilities, does it make sense that they're not permitted in Central Business District, which they probably don't work there? I don't know for sure. C2 zoning district? You know, just there's, there, there's some things that if you look back at this, are there any particular issues where it might be nice to give your organization a little more leeway? Because we've done that with the organization a little more leeway? Because we've done that with the noise section and that addresses an issue that may or may not come before us. So to the extent that we may want to look at all of these in the cumulative effort, I'm good with adopting it. I'm good with adopting it as is. I just don't know driving through or what may be, and I get I'm not asking a crystal ball, just something to help to look through it and say, you know what, we really should be more flexible on this one. And send us a quick note. We're going to present this next week or whenever. We're going to change this. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I would just echo some of the sentiments that Mr. Raymond said, which is the reason why the quote flexibility is built into specific things like noise, for example. And then also I think O5O mentions Perrin 3 talks about drive-through establishments only. A parking reduction of 50% may be approved if the application clearly indicates the establishment is carryout business. And it talks about how parking reduction shall be approved by the Community Economic Development Department. So the reason why I think those are limited to specific provisions rather than more broadly is because, as we all know, the number one way to challenge these types of ordinances is through the arbitrary capricious standard, which when you essentially make someone the decider, for lack of a better word, they get, a lot of times in the past, that person or whoever's in that position will get constantly kind of bombarded with everybody wants to be special and have a special exception. And then that lays the groundwork for the next person who says, well, now wait a sec, that's exactly what I'm, what I'm doing. So how is that not arbitrary? And so anyway, that's why I think it's in there kind of on a case-by-case basis or I guess an issue-by-issue basis. But to the extent that there's interest in doing that more, then I think we could probably maybe look for some other spots to do that. But yeah, I think that's where that comes from.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think my sole position is if we stuck the lining on the two or three that really makes sense, I'm good with that. If there's maybe more where we have flexibility, again, knowing that we've got a lot of building coming in the next few years, quite frankly, it beats having every Monday be a drive-through setback question. Mr. Raymond?
Yeah, I did have one additional place I would like you to look at, and that is 176060, number four in the table. At the very end, it says, as far as stacking capacity, capacity requirement is determined on an individual basis and shall require supplemental documentation, including the most currently available traffic counts no older than two years, level of service, operational efficiency, and customer projections. So that again leaves another opportunity where people have the ability to kind of prove their case or sell the sizzle, if you will, in, you know, when they submit something.
I appreciate that. Thank you for catching those things that I glanced over. So appreciate that. Mr. Prowse?
Thank you. Is there a way that we can work in maybe perhaps a variance wording in the code itself?
There's already ample provisions for variances of any of our provisions in code that would go before the hearing examiner.
Okay. And is it, I don't want to strike it right now, but I would just like to get maybe perhaps some background as to why we're not allowing drive-throughs in the C2 business area?
That's a great question. That's something that we discussed internally as staff. When you look at the enabling sort of section of the C2 zoning district and additionally the downtown master plan, they're really trying to emphasize and promote not quite so vehicle-centric businesses. So that's really kind of the motivation for that. And so it's kind of in keeping with our current sort of theme, if you will, and the current code.
Do you think there's a way where we can explore perhaps allowing drive-throughs in those areas as long as they're can kind of conform to those stacking lanes policies?
Of course.
I mean, it just, I think of like Kennewick, and there's a couple of coffee shops with some drivers like Dutch Brothers, and maybe it's not considered C2 over there, but then we still have them. It just, I think we're, you know, cut our legs off when we could probably be having a coffee shop or two with a drive-through access. But obviously, the layout would have to be able to allow that. So that was my thoughts on that.
Yeah, if the council desires that, we're more than happy to make that change.
So I guess there's a question before the council. Let's start with, are we good with seeing this? Are you asking to bring this next week? Is that correct?
That was my plan.
Okay. I guess other questions, are we good with as it's written to come forward next week? Or I know Mr. Prowse suggested a change or?
I would like the wording of that changed to. I like the wording of that changed to the fact that if evidence provided and along with other policies are being followed, that perhaps a drive-through could be used in C2. That'd be my only suggestion. Other than that, I'd be willing to vote on this next week.
Okay. Do, again, do we have a general consensus that we're ready to bring this forward in some fashion next week?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to see the change requested by Mr. Prowse is the second question. Ms. Please.
Oh, do you mean ahead of time?
Do we want staff to revise this?
Oh, yeah.
With to address his concern?
So the way it's currently drafted, Mr. Raymond can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the way it's currently drafted, if we strike C2, then they, these, all these requirements will still apply to them. There would be no additional requirements that they would have to show that they meet. So if we strike, if C2 is stricken out of this ordinance, they're going to have the exact same requirements as everybody else would.
Okay.
The way it's currently drafted.
From my perspective, I'd just like to know, I mean, if it's written there, if there's a basis to leave it in C2, you know, if there's a hot map. But I defer, there are six of us here tonight. You want to see it? Go ahead.
I was gonna say I'm in support of what Mr. Prowse suggested.
Yeah. Do we have any other thoughts?
I'd be fine with that too, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
Just a quick question. How does this align with our master plan for downtown?
The master plan and like I mentioned, the current code, you know, really does not seem to favor the fast food drive-through sort of occupancies. You know, there's one obvious drive-through occupancy that comes to mind, and that's banks. And they certainly exist in the downtown and would be existing and legal nonconforming if this were to pass today or next week. But it seems to kind of steer the downtown away from kind of the quick auto-oriented sort of occupancies to a different sort of a character and feel, if you will.
And so my question is because we worked on a master plan that drove people to come down and walk the streets of downtown and visit the businesses, I move that we proceed with your suggestions as written.
So you're suggesting code as it is, no modification. Okay. Do you have a particular preference, Ms. Blaisdell?
I'm, I guess in, I'm with Leo and what he suggested.
Okay. I think I would be in favor of retaining it as is with not modifying the C2 elements. Obviously, there may be some thoughts there, but it sounds like the general consensus of council is to strike the C2. Certainly, if you see something in your research that indicates safety or otherwise problematic, you know, advise us ahead of going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate your feedback.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this issue? Yes. Mr. Wilson?
Hi, thank you. As we discuss this issue, I keep hearing the inconvenience of noise over the matter of safety. It seems like conversationally, we've been talking about the inconvenience 90% of the time, the safety aspect 10%. Going forward, I'll be listening for a little bit more of the safety type, excuse me, element and what we're looking at as far as transportation and pedestrian traffic. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Mr. Grahamwell?
Good evening. I like the, as a downtown property owner, I know a lot of my neighbors in the, in the area, and I really like the idea of supporting drive-throughs in the area. A lot of our buildings are already there. They're probably not going to knock anything down, but there are a couple that I can think of right at the top of my head. One specifically is the old Bank of America building that has been vacant now for, gosh, since COVID. And I'm sure that those property owners would love to be able to use that old drive-through there that's on the, that's on the south side of the property. And then there's another one at the other end on Fifth that there's opportunity for that as well. So I think that, I think there's opportunity for growth and to bring other customers in without increasing traffic right in the core on the main, on the main drives, but sort of on the outside of C2. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this issue? Done once, going twice, third time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item I, and that is transportation impact fee study by Farr and Pierce. Deputy City Manager Sigdahl, you're going to kick us off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening, council. We have Kendra Breeland and Jessica Bracken from Farr and Pierce attending the meeting virtually, and they will be presenting some findings of the work that we've been doing on transportation impact fee. As you're aware, the city has been working on this for the last four, five months. And I'm really proud of all of the hard work that has gone in from council's part, from staff's part, and from Farr and Pierce to get us to this point. And I'll state the incredible discipline that it took because our city has a lot of needs. But we also recognize the fact that this is a significant financial impact for the development community and the fact that we need to be stair stepping into increases to such fees, but also keeping in mind that we're able to provide a sufficient transportation network for all of the people who will be joining the city and for the people who are currently at the city, they're able to drive around town in a way that is not stressful and aggravating, I will say at times. And so with that, what we have for council today is some options, and we're looking for your feedback, your guidance. And our next steps after Kendra and Jessica have presented will be for, for us to take your feedback, make any changes if we need to, and then go out to the community at large and do some outreach, get their feedback, make any changes if needed, come back to council. And our goal is to get this adopted by early June. And we will do our best and work really hard to meet that deadline. And with that, I'm going to ask Kendra and Jessica to move forward with the presentation. Kendra, we cannot hear you right now. Give us just a minute.
It's on my side. It's gonna be in hers. Hmm. Do you still not hear me?
Yes, we can now.
You can now. Okay, great. Wonderful. Well, I'll get going. Good evening, council. My name is Kendra Breeland. I'm a principal with Farr and Pierce, and I am joined by Jessica Bracken, the project manager for this effort. She's here to support question and answer. She has many of the project details at her fingertips. Okay. And with that, hopefully, everybody can see my screen. Okay. So tonight's discussion includes first a review of background concepts relevant to transportation impact fees. I'll go through this quickly as we covered much of this information in depth when we were here last in, on March 17. Actually, hold on just a minute. I have a little technical issue. And I think that should deal with it. Oops. Sorry about that. Oh, oh. I had the Facebook running and it's on a little bit of a lag. Okay. So tonight's discussion includes a review of background concepts relevant to impact fees. I'll go through this quickly as we covered much of this information in depth when I was there last on March 17. And then we will present draft service area and district options in response to feedback that we received at our last council presentation. So with that, I'm going to dive into the background information. So first of all, this slide outlines the state prescribed process for developing a transportation impact fee program. We start by with the projects that are in your adopted transportation improvement program, and we evaluate those projects for their eligibility. So those eligibility assessments that we do are, one, making sure that projects include capacity for growth. We remove the percentage of those projects that are addressing an existing deficiency as that's not an eligible expense. And then we understand where trips are coming from and to for each project, since we can't charge for growth that's coming from outside of the city. And then the last step is that we take those eligible costs for all projects in the program, and we divide those by the growth in trips that Pasco expects over the life of the program. And these rates can vary by district or service area. So I'll come up with much more specific information in Pasco's specific context later in this presentation. So just kind of at an individual project level, this includes the following steps. One, starting with the project's total cost or in, if the cities or the city's expected contribution, if the project's expected to generate outside funding. Then we remove the percentage, so again, the percentage of the project that's addressing an existing deficiency. And then we use the travel model to understand, again, where those project trips are coming from so that we can understand the percentage of growth that's coming from Pasco. And those calculations really result in the impact fee eligibility, eligible cost for each project. As a reminder, the city of Pasco has an impact fee program in place today. It's been in place for 20 years and was last updated 16 years ago. The rates are quite low and are based on daily trips. You can see the rates that exist today for a single-family home, a multifamily home, and a commercial development. They're significantly below your peers in the region. And just stepping back a minute and thinking about Pasco and transportation impact fees in the broader Washington State context, there are more than 74 cities and five counties around the state that charge transportation impact fees and have these programs in place. Rates range from the low end of 907 per PM peak hour trip all the way up to over 15,000 per PM peak hour trip. The average rate statewide is 5,700 per PM peak hour trip. And you can see this slide highlights kind of what your neighbors are charging today. And we'll give some more details in the next few slides. City of Pasco has a four-zone program, or excuse me, City Kennewick, my apologies, the City of Kennewick, has a four-zone program with PM peak hour trips that range from $434 at the low end for this small district, really right there on the river, to $1692 per PM peak hour trip. So Kennewick's got some variation. Again, that's based on the amount of growth and the projects that are being funded in different parts of the city. And then Richland also has a four-zone program. Rates range from $1,816 to $4,952 per PM peak hour trip. So now shifting our focus specifically to Pasco, just as a reminder of the process that we're in right now, we've been working with the city since the beginning of the year and last appeared before council in March. We are here tonight to and last appeared before council in March. We are here tonight to present some of the updates that are hopefully responsive to the feedback that we received from you all last month. And as, as Risha mentioned in the introduction, our next steps will be finding the program based on what we hear today, and then going out and sharing kind of the draft program and some of these concepts with the broader community, including the development community, to kind of hear their thoughts, such that we can finalize program development and come back to you for council adoption, hopefully in June. So going into the specifics of your proposed program, this slide shows the 20 projects that are proposed for inclusion in the program. These are all great capacity-oriented projects. They're in your transportation improvement program. I believe projects 19 and 20 were added since I presented to you back in March. And then, you know, really in thinking about how these projects would be funded, want to talk about the TIF service area and district servicing options. And again, you know, kind of, we looked at these service options based on desires shared from council last month. So as a reminder, TIF service areas and districts, council really shared with us that was a strong interest. It was familiar in the region, particularly as we see our neighboring jurisdictions having multiple zone programs. And also council expressed a desire for us to think about logical TIF service areas. In general, we look to do this by identifying service areas of the city that are distinct in terms of growth rates, land uses, travel sheds, and logical barriers like highways, railroads, and topography, topographical features that really define access. Looking at an individual project and the calculations we walked through, we wanted to just walk you through one of the projects that we have on the program. We have proposed to include in the program the intersection of Rainier Avenue and Karchner Street. So you can see that's a project that's in your TIP to really improve kind of access and mobility at that intersection. So first, starting with the initial part of the calculation, we start with the city's expected contribution to the project's cost, which is $1.7 million. And I would note that this is not the full project cost. Full project cost is $2.4 million, but this project is expected to generate external funding. The next step that we took is we removed the portion of the project that's related to addressing existing deficiency. That's 22% of the project cost. And then the next step is using your travel model to understand where trips are coming from and going to through this intersection. And we found that 83% of trips are related to land uses in Pasco. And so once we've done these calculations, we found that of this $2.4 million project, approximately 306 million worth, or 300, excuse me, of this $2.4 million project, 306,000 of that project, or 13% of total project costs are impact fee eligible. And we then repeat these calculations for all of the 20 projects on your list to arrive at impact fee eligible costs. So we've got just a few more slides. Now to present kind of really the interesting stuff that I think, I hope is, is responsive to kind of the request of council from last month, we've come up with a few district options. The first option is pretty simple. It's two districts in the city. You can see the north district, which really aligns where, where much of your new development is, and then the rest of the city. And as you can see on this slide, the rates would be a little higher in the north, 2,215 per PM peak hour trip. And this is really just based on the number of projects that are needed to be constructed to support mobility in the north part of the city. The remainder of the city, when we run through those TIF calculations and understand where projects are going to and from, that rate is $1,651 for the rest of the city. Again, just, just noting, a lot of your growth is in the north, so that higher, and a lot of the project needs are in the north, so that higher amount felt like a logical option to present. The second option that we wanted to share is, is more of a five district program. So this program here provides, you can see the five districts on the screen. You can also see overlapping with them the TIF projects. It's the same project list that we're pointing to. But we have run the eligibility assessments to really understand what the cost would be in each of those districts. As you can see, costs range from, at the low end, $812 in the east part of the city, where we really don't have a lot of projects, and also a lot of your trips are going outside of the city, to the highest costs, which are in the north, the south, and the central. So again, these are where a lot of your project trips are going to be using your infrastructure. And so those costs are a little higher. Again, the west part of the city has a relatively low impact fee cost, because a lot of those projects do leave the city. So that's kind of that option. And then this last slide that I have to present, and then definitely want to move on to your questions, just a comparison of these two options. So again, you can see on this page, just, you know, kind of what the maps look like, also variation of the rates. The two district program, it's relatively simple. So we thought that was a real asset of the project, or of the, of that option. The five district program provides a little more nuance, a little, probably smooth some of those variations amongst districts. But it's a bit more complex, just because there are multiple districts. So with that, I'll stop talking and really excited to hear council's thoughts and feedback.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Breeland, for your presentation. And I appreciate you giving us background on the other municipalities. I believe you said there were 74 different cities that utilize this form of funding for their transportation priorities. And, you know, one of our priorities as a council was to find more affordable housing. But we need to be sensitive to that, but also prioritize our transportation network. And we're always looking for ways for, to draw developers to Pasco instead of across the creek. But at the same time, our residents deserve a functional road system. And I kind of have vacillated back and forth on what would be better, a two district or a five district. But, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm leaning more towards the five district, but I'm amenable to the others, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graham, Mr. Harpster.
I would also be in support of a five district program. I think, like that map showed, it more accurately represents the needs of each individual region. Going with like the two district model forces the east region, which would have been at around 800 bucks in the five district model, to subsidize projects in the south region or other regions. Again, as mentioned, I think I mentioned it, that different parts of the city are growing at different rates. And so the TIF should be reflective of those rates and the projects in those areas. And then included in our agenda packet was some information regarding the Sheetz decision from Eldorado County and the nexus that the city has to show. And I think the five district model helps in doing that. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Were any additional comments? Personally, I was leaning towards two, but I think for my sake, the further we delineate these, I understand that there is, you know, sometimes maybe the east won't feed into because they're driving out of the city. Same thing with the west. It just seemed to me that the more bifurcated we got on this, the more difficult it may be to justify why one is almost five times the amount, being the south versus the east. I understand that's likely to have more people stay in the same area or stay in the area. But, you know, presumably that, I guess that Road 100 is coming into the city instead of leaving the city. I just, I would hope that wherever we land, it's easily justifiable through that nexus decision. And again, for, for that reason, I, it seemed to me that the two district would really help with that. And then just understanding, you know, the, the rates, if I understand, like, let's say the two district, the 2,200 really pulls into the fact that there were more programs, thus more resources will be required, is that kind of the basis of having it, you know, like 1.2 to 1.4 times the amount of the other one? Or am I, or excuse me, about one and a half times? Or am I missing that? Kind of how, how we justify the particular TIF rate?
If you're asking me, I can start that. And if I miss anything, Jess can certainly chime in. We, for each program, we ran kind of all the calculations. So we started with these 20 projects. We also used your city model. And we ran calculations to understand kind of the interplay between development, where the trips are going and how they, they headed through the project. So that is, it's really just falls down to the math and the calculations that we, we performed. I don't know, Jess, you came on camera, so if you have more to share, that would certainly be helpful.
I think that's a pretty good explanation. Unless there are further comments on individual projects or specific zones, we could get into some more detail if that is helpful.
No, I don't think I need detail, just to make sure I understand it in my mind. Basically, there's a project that's going to generate X trips and Y level of trips will stay within the city. Thus, there's a particular cost associated with that project. Okay. Then just want to make sure I understood it right. You know, it's, there's, there's a lot going on here, and I appreciate the work you've done here. Again, with that, from my perspective, I still prefer the two, but we'll see what council does. Mr. Peralis, your light's now off. Okay, you threw me for, for a curve there. Clearly, we all agree that we need to move forward. I'm not sure that we agree with how we need to move forward, whether it's the two or the five. I don't know that we necessarily have to get there tonight. Maybe we have this presented in the above fashion. And, you know, you guys can just swap a real once we make a decision.
Absolutely. We can take both options out to the community. There will be a lot of discussion, and I'm sure there'll be people who would prefer one or the other. But we can definitely bring that result back to council if that helps with decision-making. And you have one more set of data, maybe, that is more decisive. Both of these options are defendable. So, you know, we would not bring something forth that would not be. And, and you can make the decision then if that's more amenable to you all.
Certainly reasonable to me, Mr. Harpster.
I just didn't hear the first part. You said post who?
With our outreach.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. My only, that's what I thought you said. My only fault would be tonight would have been a great opportunity for the public. I mean, we have public comment. There's been lots of outreach with the development community, who then complains that staff doesn't reach out to them enough. And then we have an opportunity for outreach where they can show up and provide comments, and nobody shows up. So my, my preference would be that we move this forward to next week, and we can take a vote on either model. I don't, my, just again, personal purposes, I don't think we need any more feedback from the public.
I guess my one comment there is we have scheduled the outreach in April, May. Is there a statutory requirement? Do we need to do more?
No, we do not have a statutory requirement, and we've not scheduled anything yet. We were waiting for today's meeting and get your feedback. And then if, because if there was any other work that we needed to do, we did not want to schedule any, anything in terms of outreach.
Yeah. So I, I think we have two potential paths charted here. One, which would be Mr. Harpster's preference to bring it back next week for adoption in one form or another. We've seen that in many cases where we may have an A or a B, and someone can make a motion accordingly. The alternative is to continue with the public outreach through the end of next month or some portion of next month for finalization of the report in June and adoption shortly thereafter in June. Anyone have a preference towards the June or, or the, excuse, excuse me for calling it this, the Harpster approach of next week?
I would just say maybe perhaps send an email out, send over the packet if anyone has any comments. If you don't hear anything really back, I say we just bring it back on Monday. Ms. Peralis?
I'm of the thought that we should, even though people don't normally respond on a timely basis, but I think we should still have an interest in hearing one or two people that do show up for input. So that would be my, my take. We still engage the community. We still do the outreach. And we follow the schedule of having it done by June or end of June.
Yeah. I'm honestly indifferent. I could vote on this next week. I could collect more data, and I'm not sure it's sway me one way or another. So, I mean, so, Mr. Peralis? Oh. Man, that's Mike tonight. Mr. Graham and Ms. Loizel, you have preference either way?
I'm probably with you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm indifferent to it, whether it be next week or down the road. I'm good with either. I know that does help.
I don't have a preference.
With that, Mr. Peralis offered the suggestion of an email. My suggestion is, since we don't have a strong indication, maybe at least one public opportunity. And just if we shoot that down, bring it next week. How does that sound?
Can you repeat that? I didn't quite understand.
Send us an email. Suggest one date for public outreach. If we shoot that down, just bring the ordinance back with the two options and let us vote next week.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Sounds good. Hopefully, that's where all one happy family. Jessica and Kendra, thank you so much for your time and effort here. With that, do we have any public comments on this issue? Yeah. Mr. Wilson?
So when I researched this issue before I came in, I didn't know there were any other options besides the four district version in Kennewick or one giant option. The two district option doesn't appeal to me at all because I'm vigilant about Pasco remaining intact and represented well. What I've seen happen over the years, and especially more recently, and I expect it to happen going forward, there's a small but determined contingent of people who are wanting to break away and call it West Pasco. So as I see that two person, or that two district solution, that's exactly what that looks like. What that says to me is that will give West Pasco authority, money, power, position. And so I'm watching for that. So for me, the two party, or the two, the two, I'm sorry. Thank you. Wouldn't work. Thank you.
Do we have any additional public comments? Going once, going twice, third time. Looks like we're closed with that. Kendra and Jessica, thank you for your time. You can hang out or you can head home, or stay home, I guess, digitally leave. With that...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, that moves us on to item six, which is miscellaneous council discussion. Do we have Mr. Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few items. Wanted to just remind the public, council's well aware, but city's big, big signature event, or one of them, Cinco de Mayo this weekend with the parade starting at 10:00 and the festival at noon at Peanuts Park. And then wanted to thank the council and extend staff's appreciation for starting early tonight. Issues we have, time we don't always have. And there's a lot of issues on the table. Usually not an end to code issues or projects or budgets, budget-related items like rates, things like... things like that. And it was nice to have the luxury of having some time to talk about short-term rentals and having an in-depth conversation about that, and the traffic impact fee discussion tonight. And as a result of starting early, we're out of here at 9:30 instead of, excuse me, 8:30 instead of 9:30 or later, talking about some really complex issues, so. And then I would ask council, we had talked at the retreat about maybe using a fifth Monday. So there is a fifth Monday coming up in June, and we had a good discussion today, staff level, and we'll continue those regarding budget, and we're hoping to be able to spend some quality time on that one singular issue at the June 30th fifth Monday. So right now, save the date, and maybe we can, we'll do a little poll a little bit later and see who would be available and who may not be available, recognizing that's getting into summer vacations and things like that, so. Then the other thing I mentioned, apologize a little remiss in not getting this out earlier today, but we got the end of the session legislative report from Brianna yesterday afternoon. Yeah, just sent that out a little earlier, but have some good news on capital budget items with the Road 80 Neighborhood Park, the MLK Center, and Pasco Boys and Girls Club. Capital request approved, the Portion Lewis Street demo request didn't go very far, so just, transportation budget's pretty challenged. That's all I had for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was some trepidation, given the complexity of our last issue regarding the TIF, though. I would love to see staff bring back this ongoing vendor issue we have next week. We talked about it a few weeks ago, and it was going to maybe come back tonight, but staff just had some vacations, some illnesses, and other things that kind of prevented that. And though, being understanding of that, I had somebody send me a picture of the vendors, and I've witnessed it, and a couple times this week, and it just seems to be more and more plaguing our city, and would just see if we could possibly, as a council, give staff some direction to come back even as soon as next week with this, with a presentation and options, so we could immediately act on this.
Are you seeking for ratification on that position?
I am, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Harpster, is your light on for this or something else?
For something else, but I'll provide my support for that.
Mr. Prowl? I wholeheartedly support that. It's just getting out of control. I was out talking crawling this weekend, and every other corner, it had people. I mean, I think I drove over into the port area, and there was just a woman and her, it looked like her daughter, just sitting in that intersection, right where that mobile home park is right there, at that Y, and I'm just in the middle of nowhere, I'm just, I don't understand it. So I think we really need to get a handle on this.
Okay. I'll provide my support for that, and I think I'll slightly caveat it with, as long as we're able to bring something fully baked, we don't want to get halfway there on this. It's going to be an issue that's pervasive to the whack of the sentiment. The more you drive around the city, the more you see people that are clearly not permitted vendors, if you want to call them that. So if we could have something move quickly, I think especially with the fine weather, we're going to see more and more. So if we can see it next week, I think that'd be ideal. Just let us know a couple days into the week. Thank you.
Mr. Harpster?
Yeah, just, you know, we welcomed Director Miller earlier this evening. I wanted to give kudos to Ms. Sigdel for filling in as interim director for the last several months, and I'm sure that it was a pain in her butt that she wouldn't tell us that, but just want to mention my appreciation for that and the extra time that went into that. And I will say that we, I think we're quick, maybe rightfully so, wrongfully so sometimes, to bring up when things don't, when items, when there's no progress made on items that we have a sense of importance on, but during the absence of a director for the department, there was a lot of progress made on a lot of items that council's given direction to make progress on. And so I think it would have been well within staff's purview, say, there's no CED director, this is all going to sit for six months. Instead, a lot of progress was made, and so thank you for that.
Seeing no further lights, next item would be executive session. I see I'm listed, is that a typo? Okay. Hey, I got to try my luck, you know, I'm ready to roll. With that, we are adjourned. It's 8:35 PM. Thank you for joining us.